Looking at another way, if we were to inflation proof since 2011, the gap, BSA would need to be included, increased by about nineteen hundred and sixty-three dollars to tie to 2011 spending power. You see some other bars in there with the use of fund balance and state one-time funds. That's largely how we've been able to balance the budget over the years. Some of those gaps in there would be cuts, so increasing the PTR, decreasing the other staff staffing. But really, as we're looking at this, you know, the long-term sustainable financial plan just hasn't been there. So we get into a situation where we're have this large and ever-growing structural deficit. So into our pro forma budget, you know, it's really based on our foundation formula that's in statute, and that multiplies the number of kids through a series of adjustments, including how much each, the cost of doing business in each district, a special needs factor of twenty percent, another CTE factor of one and a half percent, and then intensive need students get thirteen times the student count. Then we add on the back end the correspondence, which is ninety percent of the enrollment essentially. So it all adds up to that forty-one, you know, seven hundred and fifty students to start with, or ADM gets to about seventy-one thousand in an adjusted ADM. So when you're talking about BSA increases, you can look at that seventy-one thousand adjusted ADM number and multiply that by the increase. So if the increase was a thousand dollars, multiply that by seventy-one thousand, you get seventy-one million. That's how much, that's how you can rough out additional state revenue based on BSA increases is using that about seventy-one thousand ADM metric. So some of the caveats as we're going through this, there's a lot of unknowns. We have some unsettled contracts that have quite a large dollar value to that. We have an incorporated request from other departments that might change how they operate or do business in here. And then they also is kind of the the local contribution. That's where the assembly comes in, in the mayor's offices, we try to support that. One of the big drivers that we have from twenty-five to twenty-six going into it is that required local contribution increase. So you see that's about a little over seven and a half million. That's based on property values, and it would be tied to the 2024 assessed valuation. So as property values go up, so does the required local contribution. That additional local contribution is actually going down as that's tied to state revenue, and that's gone down based on enrollment. Those are enrollments gone down, our state funding tied to that enrollment's gone down. So our additional local contribution, it's allowable, also goes down. But the required local goes up, so overall it will, the the total funding or total local contribution ask will be increasing. Should be noted that required local contribution, as that goes up, the state goes down dollar for dollar. So seven and a half increase to the taxpayers equals seven and a half million dollar decrease to the state. Some things that we're walking through these revenue projections to note, one of the big ones is our fund balance. We do not include a usage of fund balance on this, on our, on our revenue projections. We will, at the end of the, towards the end of the presentation, we have about forty-seven million that we'll be adding back to that. So you can really, we want to show both the structural deficit and then the actual reductions would have to be made. But the big ones are that thirty-seven million in fund balance, and then the forty-nine million dollars in the one-time funds that we got, that they're received this year. And that was equivalent to about six hundred and eighty dollars per adjusted ADM. That was the, or in a BSA amount, so six hundred and eighty-dollar BSA equivalent in one-time funds is what we received this year. But again, it's one time, not in statute, so we don't include it for the purposes of this presentation. Kind of a longer term look at the property values in Anchorage and that required local contribution from seventeen to twenty-six. About a twenty-three percent increase in property values, but same increase in that required local contribution. So since two thousand and seventeen, about over twenty-four million dollars has been cost shifted from the city to, or from the state to the city. Also, transportation increase hasn't increased at all during that timeframe. So the city's put in an additional nine million dollars for this year to help support that transportation program. As you see your transportation, like your bus program, the cost of that continually increased. We have to pay our drivers more. Minimum wage is going to affect that now as the minimum wage law has passed and increased the minimum wage. What that does too is there's statute that allows for, or requires bus drivers to be paid twice the minimum wage. So as that goes up, so does our cost for bus drivers, and now we'll see what currently kind of our starting point in our contracts are. And then you can see that additional allowable contribution going down, and that's what's really tied to enrollment. For the state foundation revenue going down about a little over forty million, twenty-four of that is the shift to the required, to the city, and the rest of it is going to be the, just a loss in enrollment. Any questions on this? This is kind of the salient point for the assembly anyway, as far as relating to the tax requests.
Just like to add real quick, Mr. Roll call, we do have Mayor Lawrence and the Superintendent Dr. Bryant here in the room with us. Thank you. And Assemblymember Raleigh has joined us as well.
Yeah, sorry, I think, I think I missed it when you said it, but the addition, so I'm looking at the additional local contribution, and it went from one-on-one to seventy-nine mil, or ninety-seven million. Can you remind me what that is?
So that's the amount that it's tied to, the additional allowable contribution is tied to twenty-three percent of what the state calls basic need, which is that adjusted ADM number times the base due allocation. So as that basic need has gone down with the static BSA and lower enrollment, then our additional allowable contribution, and that's the max, based on the maximum amounts. So that's gone down, just, it's really just tied to enrollment.
Thanks. So it wasn't a policy choice, it was really just a formula?
Correct, yeah. So as we go through, and we have to look at these reductions, about eighty-five percent of our costs go to personnel right now, and fifteen percent non-personnel. So we talk about making reduction, generally it's going to have to come out of people. The bigger changes, projected increase in our personnel costs, about eleven and a half million. That also includes a reduction in fifty teaching positions that are tied to a loss of students that occurred this year. So, and that would be lower than what we budgeted. So as we've lost students below what we actually projected, where the, those teaching positions go away if we keep the same, people teach your ratio. But that's all factored into this presentation. And then our attrition estimates are currently at budget levels. We're going to continue to review that to see how many vacancies and folks waiting medical insurance internally we have. As far as our FTE distribution, you can see up in the twenty-six that highlighted box, that's where the fifty FTE would come out of for instruction, and that's just related to lower enrollment. For the cost of those employees here is kind of how that shakes out. You see, you know, it's a little, you know, around a three percent mark on, a little over on our average salary and wages by function as we go. As we try to figure out that, I mean, a lot of these are also unbargained at this point, if they are in the AEA bargaining unit. And then you'll see that metrics-based staff to four-point-two million, that's actually the reduction of those fifty positions. We have that same amount in the benefits for metric-based staff, you see the one-point-eight million dollars in, on line twenty-eight there. But overall, about two percent increase in total salaries, wages, and benefits that we're projecting based on just kind of those aggregate things we're seeing, and then drop in number of staff. And as relates to district administration, we did toss this in to see where our peers are on administration, because we do hear that a lot, is your administration costs are too high. Our indirect cost rate's about five-point-oh-six percent, it's one of the lowest in the state. So we are going to come back to this and, you know, probably perpetually as people want to talk about administration and how we can produce those costs. And as far as our attrition goes, our vacancy rates, this is kind of a historical look at where we, how many percentage of vacancy is as a percent of our total budget, how that's increased over time. And I know the cities had the same problems, the states have some problems, even our, you know, private, private companies had, we're all having trouble filling a lot of these positions. And this is just kind of to graphically illustrate how the district has fared with those. So you can see some spikes in twenty-three and twenty-four typically, or generally that's from our asset money when we were able to push some staff costs in the end of the year to close out those grants. But we are expecting, you know, about forty million dollars in unspent salary and benefits costs that are going to be factored into our budget. So we do, we do factor that in, so we're not going to have a surplus, but it is ever-growing at this point. So for our non-personnel expenditures, most of that is contracted services, which includes our utilities. Now, those projected increases are, you know, electric telephone garbage, about five percent. And now I believe we need to go back and update this. I saw a story on AWU's cost going up by about five percent as well. So we are going to have some other things to look at, but generally about one-point-seven million overall increase or about two percent. And so overall, the structural gap between what's provided in statute for revenue versus what we're spending top, what education looks like now as far as operations, structural gap of about a hundred and seven million dollars. Think we'll have about forty-seven million dollars in fund balance we can put towards that. That brings it down to about, our fund balance down to about five percent of our total expenditures, and about one percent of that would be actual unassigned money that we could use in place of emergencies, which would be equivalent to about six million dollars. So it doesn't give us a lot of flexibility when we spend our fund balance down to that level. But if the alternative is cutting another four hundred positions plus, then I think we'd probably want to go ahead and go that route. So that leaves us, that's general fund budget about, gap about sixty million dollars in actual reductions that we would need to make, barring any quick change by the legislature on some of these funding metrics. For transportation, we're having similar issues, about a three-point-eight million dollar gap there. For the purpose of this presentation, we've included the nine million dollars in property taxes that we received for twenty-four, twenty-five as part of the twenty-five, twenty-six budgets. And then we'll be looking at how much room we might have within the context of the, the city's tax cap to be able to help maybe offset some of those losses as well. Are there any questions so far? We'll do this kind of quick.
Assemblymember Paul.
Thanks. So yesterday we had a, a energy retreat that was very instructive and, and really talking about, you know, big picture issues. But one of them that they brought up was, of course, if and when, energy costs significantly increased both for natural gas that also impacts our electric generation, and really that, that major payers of utilities like this school district would be harmed by that. So I wonder if, if there is, if, it sounds like you guys had modeled in increases of electricity. You'll mean to add water and then those other costs, that's kind of the baseline scenario. Have you modeled out or thought about, you know, what might happen in a significant energy spike? Which, you know, basically it was discussed that by twenty-twenty-seven, that is very likely because of the supply. But really, in situations of cold winters and peak usage, that could come sooner. So again, not to rehash that conversation, but just wondered how, how that's been factored into the budget or if that can be, thanks.
We certainly can factor in, it's really easy for us to go back in and model those percentage increases. But we haven't had a really significant increase like that included in this presentation. But we will go back and look at it and see what other data that we have that we can pull to make sure we kind of have enough money to support our usage.
Yeah, and I think also it's just something to, to have on the radar, because as that can, can conversation continues, I think we will need to really illustrate the, the impacts of those cost increases. And, and one of the findings was really, it's hard to, it's hard for large organizations to even know what their utility bills are, except for the folks who actually pay those bills. And so I think pulling that out, because I know it's, you said it's in contracted services now. I think, maybe not changing the budget, but just if, if we were to ask, you know, how much does, for all the school facilities, how much do we spend on natural gas? I think that would be a useful number to have in the near future, thanks.
Yeah, and we do have that all broken out by school, by utility. So some of the issues.
Member Watsons.
I just wanted to respond, I appreciate the question. I remember that we actually discussed this, I brought it up in a finance committee meeting round about October a year ago. And I remember looking at heat for buildings, which is a category that you can look at in our budgets going back for a number of years, and it looks like this.
Assemblymember Bronda.
Thank you. So dovetailing on what Anna said, which is, I'm going far afield a little bit, but we were talking to some renewables and renewable IPP was looking at community solar farms. And they haven't ever explored it, but they thought the roof of a school would be a perfect opportunity to do a community solar farm and could help benefit your energy costs plus the surrounding community. So just a thought.
Number Watsons.
I, sorry, I have another response. I think it was at the Alaska Association of School Boards meetings, Senator Murkowski was speaking, and she had recently come from a really dynamic conversation at South High School, where a student there had written to the senator and said, why can't we have solar panels on our school? And I don't have, you know, the tea leaves in front of me, but Senator Murkowski sounded very interested in working to support the students' initiative. So I would be intrigued to see whether there is any kind of additional support coming from, from that direction in response to student.
Assemblymember Broad.
Yeah, thanks. And I, and I appreciate, I know we went on a tangent about the energy discussion. I think it's, it's something that's going to continue, so we should make sure that we're tracking it. But I guess I just want to register my concern now and why I think we need to elevate those numbers going into next session is that, that if there is a spike in energy costs and our budgets are finite, I worry that we will have to make cuts to services because of that utility cost. So I just want to say that very clearly, that I think it is a risk. And so it's something that I think we need to keep communicating in addition to all of the things that, that we know that, that you've put in here that are already problems, thanks.
Any other questions at this time? I will add in that under Mayor Burke Woods, he pressured us a bit about considering. I will add in that under Mayor Berkowitz, he pressured us a bit about considering solar or wind or, or whatnot. I, I mean, one, I think anything that complicates repairing roof is an issue. Cause we repair roofs every year. I mean, it's just a constant in the bond packages and whatnot. So I think there's some concern on that. And then also just to some degree, the administrative overhead to make it happen. That it is kind of a whole separate area that involves wiring into the building. And ours are complicated by the fact that a lot of our buildings have auxiliary power to be shelters. And so it would all have to be coordinated. But I think if, if the municipality ever began exploring, pushing the use of renewables on city property or in Anchorage. Certainly we've got a lot of real estate. I've contemplated before, if we had solar over our parking lots at high schools. Except there's a huge security question about it. And of course, clearing the snow and all kinds of other things. So I, I think most people on the border are very supportive of the idea. We'd love to see it happen. But it comes with a complication and if we ever have the expertise available to work through it, it'd be marvelous. And there's a lot of space out there. But it can cost a lot of money to use it as well. Please continue.
And so just the, the transportation's been an issue statewide. That hasn't been increased since 2015, 16. So this is a statewide chart that shows since 2013, the revenue and expenditures. You'll see a few anomalies in FY 16. There's a spike in expenditures. That was actually the result of ASD buying a big chunk of buses for our contractor to buy down the long-term cost of that contract. And then in 17, revenue was short funded by the state. So districts had to cover that. And then in 21, you'll see a drop there in both cost and revenue. And now it's more tied to COVID than anything else where we lost students and we're not running buses quite as much. But overall, then you start seeing those costs trending back up and the revenue trending down. It's kind of statewide enrollments trended down. So really we're going to have to look at a combination of strategies to produce a balanced budget for 26. There's nothing easy to pull out and cover a $60 million deficit. So, and then even if we were to get some of that money back from the state, that's only a short time, a short term thing. Cause that's going to spend our money down to nearly nothing. So really we just need some long-term significant revenue expenditure adjustments that are inflation proof from, and this is really more of a state issue. That we can, if we can get in a long-term financial plan in place, that really helps with those long-term instructional plans as well. So being able to project out how much money we have and have it tied to inflation is really critical to be able to produce those instructional plans. And that was the end of it. There is any other questions or comments?
Assembly member Brondo, Paul.
Thanks. So I know in the past, well, so last meeting that you had and the presentation that you gave to legislators in October, which was great. And that I had a chance to attend, you talked about the asks being, BSA transportation, school bond debt reimbursement, I believe, and not saying a specific BSA number, just saying, please, please pick something reasonable. So I wonder ba- based on this budget, is there any change to that? Is there, is there an intent to, to start using more specific numbers? Or is it really just presenting these facts and then saying, the decision's up to you guys, but here's, here's what we're at as a district?
Right. And I believe we're going to, as a, you know, school board and as a state group, start advocating towards that inflationary adjustment since 2011. I think that's really where we want to turn and try to get back some of that buying power to be able to decrease our class sizes and add those supports that our students need.
Board member Watsons.
I think it's probably a yes and I was delighted that over the past couple of months, the Alaska Association of School Boards passed a resolution that didn't put a number in, but it did specifically reference FY 11. So, and I know that Alasbo and the Alaska Council of School Administrators, they're also really honing in on this FY 11, which I can speak to a little bit later during the, regarding the joint memo.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move to the 2025 bond.
Good morning. I'm Jim Anderson. I'm the chief operating officer. During the last briefing, we went through, or the last joint assembly meeting, we went through the PowerPoint briefing that went in detail through the, the proposed bond package. And it passed without any amendments by the school board during the last meeting. And the AM was transmitted and is on its way to the assembly now. Quick overview is, it's our sixth of eight groups of secure vestibules. We're continuing to focus on providing more secure entryways to our elementary school buildings. One or two more bonds and we'll be done with all of our elementary schools. And then we'll start looking at middle school and high school, which are certainly much more complex. The secure vestibule, basically it, it is a good mechanism where someone can't enter the initial door without being buzzed in. And then once they get in, they're in a vestibule area where they also can't still access the school until being buzzed in into the school office. We are implementing Raptor, a new automated program that does a quick background check on people before they're now allowed access into the school. In, in one of our earlier secure vestibule designs, it was in October of 2018. These actually work exactly as planned. We had two adults in the parking lot getting in an argument. One of the adults shot the other male. He made it into the secure vestibule where the gentleman with a gun was still trying to come after him. If the bulletproof glass works, the individual was unable to get into the school and police were on site quick enough to protect both the gentleman who had been shot, as well as arrest the, the individual with a gun. So it definitely is, is one of the best practices across our nation, although not every state is investing in them yet. I think it's just going to keep going as we look at more and more security incidents around the, the US. We're also replacing an intrusion system or a burglar alarm system that's outdated at quite a few schools. Access control, allowing people to push a panic button and lock down the doors in the event of an emergency. And to use fobs to be able to get into a door. It costs about $4 and something to replace a fob. If someone loses it, you can turn it off real quick. It costs thousands of dollars to rekey all the exterior doors if someone loses one of those keys. So that's a good investment long-term in the district and as well as short-term. We're also putting on the bond package and we had talked about this. Bartlett High School infrastructure improvements. The bulk of it will go towards a design of a seven-year master plan, but there will also be some improvements. Spring Hill Elementary, also some structural site circulation, HVAC and electrical and some other improvements that really need to be done in that facility. As well as Campbell. West High School will have, the utility door is this underground tunnel kind of thing that has all of the water pipes, all the electrical, all the everything that allows that massive building to operate. And it had been upgraded many times over 60 years. And every time they upgraded, they just kept putting the new stuff, leaving the old stuff in place. So at some point you can no longer walk through there and do repairs. And this will finalize those repairs. And the most important thing for me, although they're all important, is 3.8 million dollars to upgrade our very old snow removal equipment. So I, I know the municipality is approaching in a slightly different way. We can't do a levy for taxes. But we're adding that into the bond. And I think after the last couple of years, I would, I would expect to get pretty broad support for that. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Assembly person Brondo.
Thank you. So the secure vestibule and the buzzing in, how much additional staff?
No additional staff. In fact, well, we've got our staff about as low as you could possibly have in a front office. There's usually one or two people in a front office. Just due to budget cuts over the years. This actually frees up some workload for not having to go to a door if you lock it down. It also has bulletproof panels all around that, that front office. I've got one in my office. If you're curious, you can come up. APD shot it with every type of weapon they had. And the only thing that can penetrate it is armor piercing round. It's, it's a very safe front office and vestibule. And it's, you know, it certainly has improved security without adding people.
Okay. I wasn't, I was looking for the next word. Staff responsibility staff. I mean, is it pushing those office staff from what they need to do to be monitoring that door in that way? Do they, they're in no way doing background checks prior to buzzing in. It's the system that you're putting in place.
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Lady Lefrancs.
Thank you, President Holloman. Would you refresh my memory on the amount of the bond? And then also I understand there is no ongoing discussion about going to a multi-year bond.
Absolutely, Mary Lefrancs. So the bond is 63.8 million dollars total. And since our last multi-year, the multi-year bond, I think was a good idea. If ASD were to do a two-year bond and then the following year, the municipality were to be able to do a two-year bond. But what we found was when we're the only ones doing a two-year bond, it's so expensive, even though it, it looks more expensive because now you've got two years worth of projects and it failed pretty soundly.
Member Donald.
You know, the last seven years, our bond packages have pretty much been a neutral as far as debt. New debt being incurred, we're retiring about the same amount of debt as we were asking for in new bonds. What, could you explain where we're at with this bond package?
I didn't bring the sheet with what we're paying off. I can provide that though and get it to the assembly as well. But it again is, is because we had the 112 million dollar bond fail, we're actually certainly below that when you look at a three-year period. And you know, anytime you, you don't pass a bond, you're about 60 plus million dollars more that you're paying off that you never added as new debt. But the, the reality long-term for Anchorage is tied to the state's decision back in 2015 to stop doing state bond debt reimbursement. They did that for many, many years. And I know when, remember Donley was Senator Donley. You, you were supportive of that. And in fact, the whole state was. But in 2015, in April, they, Anchorage had passed a bond in April. And they passed a bill in June, oh, signed by the governor that retroactively went back to January and stopped doing state bond debt reimbursement. It used to be depending on the project, 60% was picked up by the state for some projects. Or 70% was picked up by the state for some projects. So since January 2015, every bond that passed is 100% on local taxpayers. So you do, and remember Donley is alluding to this. I know he's well aware of it. That even though we are putting the total cost of the bond at less than what we're paying off, because the state isn't reimbursing any of it anymore. And hasn't since January 2015, that it's becoming much more difficult to use that as a, a line that you can't cross. Because our infrastructure keeps getting older and older. If you look at 2010, we had 170 million dollars in deferred backlog. We had 750 million dollars in total bond debt. We now have around 500 million dollars in total bond debt. So 250 million dollars less. But that 170 million in deferred maintenance is now over a billion dollars. And what has caused that is this intentionality of every year trying to make sure the bond, total bond cost is less than what you're paying off. And when you do that over time, we, we've magnified our deferred maintenance by a factor of 10. So just to put things in relative perspective, it's great to be under what you're paying off. But there is certainly a price and at some point it's so difficult to recover from that.
Assembly student representative, Paula Jones, if I didn't get the name right.
Testing. Okay. I wanted to ask about the roadmap for the secure vessels coming to middle and high schools. It sounded like you said two more years until elementary schools are done.
Well, they won't be done. It'll be two more bond years. They'll probably be done in about five to six years. Generally when we pass a bond, we do projects over four to five years, fortunately on the secure vestibules. Because we have so many design standards now, the design part of that goes pretty quickly, but we still, as, as I think everyone knows, there's only so much construction capacity in Anchorage. And so even if you could pass more and, and have more money, it's the workforce. And our construction season is really the summer break when schools are closed. And it takes about two and a half to three months. What we've seen in the last couple of years is it's getting harder and harder to get some of the supplies. And so we've been finishing secure vestibules, not at the middle of August, but into, well into October, early November. And it's, it's just part of the supply pipeline that is really a nationwide issue. And also it's a, a shortage of construction workers in Anchorage.
Assembly member Salt, I believe is online and has a question.
Thank you. I don't have a question yet. I just wanted to make sure that I could, we made a participant which has been fixed. Thank you. I will have some questions. We'll get the transportation and a few others. Thank you.
Thank you. Assembly member Paul.
So I have two questions, I guess, also along the lines of, of information requests or numbers. I am very interested in the school bond debt reimbursement, understanding that better. Thanks for the overview of, of kind of where it is now. The two things I would be interested in is, and we probably have these numbers. Generally speaking, how much the state was contributing, but you know, in dollar amounts prior to 2015? Cause I think a theme that I keep hearing is the state kept, was giving us a whole bunch of money that they don't do anymore. And I think it can be kind of invisible because it, well, one, it happened almost 10 years ago now. And two, I think people just forget. And so I think getting those numbers would be helpful because we already know it's in the millions of dollars. It used to be for operating grants for the city itself, for capital money to repave our roads. And then of course the school bond debt. So anyway, so, so that's a request. It's kind of some historical look back, maybe 10 years to the 2000s, something like that.
We have that. In fact, on some bonds, we're still receiving some state bond debt reimbursement. Because it went, it didn't, it wasn't that from January 2015, they stopped. They still had a commitment for all the older bonds. And since we pay bonds off over, you know, 20, 30 years, those older bonds prior to 2015 that we're still paying off, we still do get some state bond debt reimbursement. But we'll, I'll find a, a way to make it more easily understood in a, in a clean way. And of course we can provide that.
Yeah. My, my impression is we, we think of it as this much money that the state used to give us, and it's really this. And so we have to be able to explain this. The other question is, you know, you mentioned kind of supply costs and other things going up. I would be curious, again, offline is fine. What the last couple of years of projects have looked like in terms of how they were originally cost? What the last couple of years of projects have looked like in terms of how they were originally costed out at the design level? And then what if any increase there was by the time you got to construction? Cause I'm really interested in understanding that delta, cause I, I know it's not zero. I think it's significant and I think it's really important for us to understand large-scale construction projects that take several years. They have these cost increases and it's not anyone's fault. It is the way things are now. And I think, again, I think we really need to clearly understand that, um, not just for this purpose, but for other discussions we're having. Thanks.
Sure, I can pull that together.
Uh, member Higgins.
I appreciate the comment about the inflation, cause I remember back in the nineties where they used to go out with a bond and then have to go on supplemental bonds just to make up the difference with the inflationary factors. My concern, and I realize that's taken into account, but my concern is just always referring to what we paid off to be able to go forward to maintain things when, when we're paying things off from twenty years ago and trying to compare the cost to say it's going to be the same thing today. It isn't the same thing from what it was last year, and it sure isn't the same thing what it was twenty years ago. So we're constantly sticking with that same approach. And I think that's deflating the ability for us to maintain what we've got, cause that's way underestimating what, what the really the cost is to do the same amount of work.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Brings us to section F, which we have no items under. Section G, uh, first item is table. Second item is snow removal, which was put on the agenda by the assembly.
Thanks. Um, just briefly, I think that we had a good discussion in September. I'm trying to remember back then. And it was around, um, I think at that time it was preparing for winter, um, and, and the issues of snow removal and how that can impact school, school service operating. Um, and I think it was also possibly around shared equipment for, uh, snow removal, clearing parking lots and things. So I guess I'm, I'm looking at Becky, not because I'm expecting a report, but I'm just trying to jog my memory of what we had talked about. And if there's any report on, I guess, the updates of, um, uh, the coordination between the district and the, and the union, if there's anything to share there. I, but I think that's what this was about. Thanks.
Assembly member Brawling. Yeah, thank you. So we could also take that topic up if we wanted to at our next transportation committee meeting, which is on January fifteenth. That's a Wednesday at one P M. At City Hall. So if we want to talk more about those collaborative efforts, that would also be a potential venue. Thanks.
Uh, assembly member Bronga.
Thank you. I, I know that sometimes it's just working out the kinks and Muldoon Elementary had a lot of problems and it all got ironed out. It was like, uh, Paul Van Landingham is amazing. And he just realized that the, the timing of how they were plowing was not conducive to Muldoon Elementary School students getting to school. So it's been all changed and they're very happy there. So I, I'm appreciative of that. But another, um, thing that came up is at university area community council, um, a woman, very passionately, you know, we had to finally put the brakes on her. But, um, she was talking about the number of times that school is closed. So every time we have an event where, you know, there's snow and it doesn't get plowed and, but the ice and, recently she said, you know, she just gets up in the morning and is like, oh my God, is school going to be off? And I have to go to work and I have six kids and what am I going to do with them? And I just, um, it made me wonder, the policy has definitely changed over time. But is there a way to, if you can safely get to school, school could roll? Um, I, I'm not sure why that changed, but there, there's different areas of town that are sometimes not as affected as the, the areas that are causing the call on the, the schools. I know sometimes I see Gerwood is still open, but you know what I'm getting at. Is there a way to, if you can get there, we're on.
So the, the challenge we have and, and the reason Gerwood is an exception, all but one staff member at Gerwood Elementary lives in Gerwood. But at all of our other schools, like if you look at the hillside, you don't see a lot of school teachers living up there. You don't, definitely don't see a lot of BPOs and custodians and cafeteria managers. And, and so if we can't get staff to school, even if the kids could get there, there's no one to open the door. And there's no one to teach them or do anything but maybe open a gym where it's warm. But that's our challenge. We don't hire based off where people live. We hire based off who applied and we have people coming from the valley and all over the Anchorage Bowl. And, and it's a very unique situation at Gerwood that allows us to operate that way. Um, and it's because really the entire school staff lives there. When we close, um, but leave Gerwood open, their, um, community also has organized four-wheel drive transportation system to make sure that kids get to school, which would be really difficult for every school, community in the city to also now pick up bus operations. It's, it really is a challenge. Like yesterday morning, when I was talking to my folks, um, at three A M. And, and it actually, I thought we were going to be open, um, o- only to realize by three forty-five, we were probably not opening. We had to send them back out in the road. That's why we did a delay. We couldn't tell where across the city it was raining and what was the impact. We had early vehicles, um, that we sent on the road that were stuck in ditches for an hour and a half to two hours. And we realized school is not opening. It was, it was everywhere. Uh, but that's the challenge. If we could, you know, in a rural community where everyone in the village lives in the village, it, it's a lot easier to keep that school open, no matter what the weather is. It's just in Anchorage. Our staff have to show up to open the door.
I'll also say, we, we looked at this, I'm going to say ten or fifteen years ago. But we also got kind of a great example of the issue when the bridge was struck out on the Glen Highway. It affected schools all across the Anchorage Bowl. And, and it wasn't students that had any trouble getting to their, their buildings. But it just took a, a chunk of staff out of service, um, that morning. And, and that's kind of what we would be facing. Gerwood took some time and pushing from the Gerwood community. Because say, I was the liaison to Gerwood a few years back and they, they said, well, you know, you may be having really bad weather in Anchorage or something, but like, we cannot walk here. And the first response from administration was, eh, this just complicates everything. But they have made that transition because it is very insulated that way. But even, even trying to do Eagle River, and, and I'll say there was a point where, when I was working with A E A, I was able to map where I could pick a school and then map where the staff of that school lived. And it is very scattered. There is a little bit of exception in that a lot of the staff for Eagle River schools live in Eagle River. But it's not a hundred percent related. And then the, the communication side of it. It, it really complicates that side of it terrifically. The one thing, and I say this to someone that started teaching in the district in ninety-six, the thing that really seems to have changed is the weather. And it's warm weather that really kills us. And that's what happened yesterday. It's, um, I would say a year ago was an unusual year in that we closed because of snow. Usually it's because of heat. And I think previously we had a five-day closure. When Carol Comer was superintendent, because things warmed up to such a degree, we couldn't get the ice gone fast enough. So I, I will say that at different times, the administration is really taking a close look. They've done it where they could, um, but it, it becomes complicated really fast. Uh, member Brawling.
Can't help but throw this in. It, it also sounds like our, uh, severe housing problems and inability of most people to afford living close to their jobs, in addition to the fact that we're very spread out and everybody has to drive everywhere, has major operational impacts on our school. That's what I'm hearing as well. Cause I think that's something that maybe has gotten worse over the last, uh, several years, but maybe, maybe with baseline conditions as well.
No. I, I'm sure it's different with support staff and some of the other folks. I was just looking at certificated staff when I was able to do it. You know, I would actually take exception to what Jim said. Our, our teaching staff lives all over town. In every part of town. I really expected to see some clusters, uh, but I didn't. And I, I think for the most part, people in the bowl don't move when they change schools. And there is a fair amount of movement among schools. But, um, it, yeah, we, we are a car-centric town. There's no question about it. Any other, Mayor LaFrance?
Thank you. And, uh, not a comment on this topic, but just to say I need to leave and wanted to, um, thank you all for hosting us here today and just thank you all for your work. See you at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I did have one other question that would go to the city and, and my apologies if it's been soft. I, I know there was a glitch with O'Malley Elementary School. That the street it's on was in a limited road service area. Not attached to the other road service area. I'm not even sure I can describe it accurately, but thank you. Yes. And so we haven't actually met.
Yeah, I'm Becky Munpierston. I'm the municipal manager.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I can absolutely speak to that. And so this is Rock Ridge Drive that you're talking about. And a portion of Rock Ridge Drive is included in the upper O'Malley Limited Road Service Area, which as you noted, is not adjacent to Rock Ridge Drive. It's a, um, product of historical, uh, cobbling together of services. And it's also unique in that the property is immediately adjacent to Rock Ridge Drive or not actually included in that Lursa. It's just the roadway itself, which is not an issue that we have anywhere else in the municipality. It's the only instance we have of a road without adjoining property owners connected to it, being incorporated into a Lursa. And so last year there was some miscommunication, some challenges with the Lursas willingness to continue to plow that roadway. We have communicated with them this year and made clear their obligation to make sure that that roadway is plowed. We're also exploring a variety of different solutions to try and rationalize how that road is plowed in the future. Because it isn't, um, it isn't tremendously rational. I think this is the problem where there were challenges last year for the Lursa is that it requires their plow service, their, their plow provider to essentially pick up a blade and drive down the hill and then complete this very small section of roadway before completing their work. Um, and so we've been exploring a number of different potential rationalizations of service. For this winter, the answer is the Lursa is going, has committed their, where that's their responsibility. They are absolutely committed to making sure they get it done and that they provide service on par with the service provided to the remaining of the limited road service area. Going forward, we have several different options on the table that we're exploring.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other question? Seeing none. Uh, moving to item number three, the academies of Anchorage update. Superintendent Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll keep this fairly brief. So, uh, I've spoken several times with the assembly about the goals of the academies of Anchorage, um, which is an exciting initiative to increase the college career and life readiness of students. The most major update since we last met was initially the district to plan to propose an adjustment to the high school schedule. And the reason for that was because with an extra class or two in a student's schedule, we could, um, guarantee that every student could take at least one, uh, current technical education course, which would lead to a variety of different current technical education pathways or, um, pathways aligned to college-bound students. With that said, uh, what we found is it's not quite the right time to make that shift. So I paused that discussion, um, to be announced. So what that means is that we're in the midst of a pivot of the academies of Anchorage. We'd like to move forward, but I've heard loud and clear from the community that it's time to go slower so we can go farther. Because there is a lot of support for this. But what you'll see moving forward is, one, we want the academies to be cost neutral to the general fund. But two, uh, we are in receipt of a fairly significant federal grant. So assuming that, uh, that, that grant remains stable, of course, there are certain, uh, uncertainties with the U S Department of Education. But assuming that grant is stabilized, we'd like to repurpose that to be more targeted towards the same goals, which is one, to get students more dual credit, more, uh, technical education opportunities, internships, um, so we can increase our graduation rates and get more students into the workforce, um, and/or fantastic colleges. So the, the spirit and the mission of academies is still blazing ahead. But right now the team is looking inward and doing a lot of planning. Uh, so in the next couple of months, we'll come back to the school board with a proposal for how we'd like to proceed. It'll look different in the sense that not every student will be asked to take a current technical education class. But we really want to make sure that we can revitalize these programs because they're key, not just for success in college, but in high-demand, high-quality, uh, careers, fulfilling careers. And I hope that many students will choose careers here in Anchorage because there's a lot of need. And this is how we can begin to reinvent ourselves in terms of our own economic prosperity. So that's the major academies update.
Questions? Seeing none.
I, I, I just have one question. This is member Salt, sort of unrelated. But it came out of one of the community councils the other day. Is there a plan, I'm not sure what to ask this, but is there a plan to go back and evaluate start times? And just see if, if the intended outcomes have been achieved, um, just to do like a, a post-implementation analysis? Thank you.
Thank you, member Salt. So in short, the district will be analyzing key indicators over the next semester. We'll be limited in what, uh, data points that we'll have after, uh, the, the implementation thus far. But I have committed to provide, uh, a report on our findings sometime in the spring semester for the boards. They can evaluate, um, the, the progress that's been made as a result of the change and also, um, some of the, uh, complications that, that happened because of the change. It's a very complicated endeavor and there has been positive feedback and then also some challenges. So, uh, more to come on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Member Lawson.
I would just invite, uh, any board or assembly members to check out the publicdata dot A S D K twelve dot org, sort of portal where you can go and, uh, it's how to access a number of the data dashboards, including the attendance dashboards. And you'll see that attendance is up, um, across the K twelve system this, this year. So I understand there are challenges, but it's the best attendance that we've had in years this year.
Any other questions or comments on academies? Seeing, hearing none. Uh, item number four, rightsizing. Superintendent Bryant.
Thank you. I am back again. So in terms of the rightsizing ASD plan, uh, we've shared the proposals with the assembly. As, as you, uh, know, about a week ago, uh, we made an adjustment to the plan. And that's because the rightsizing initiative has always been designed to be responsive to community feedback. And in response to that feedback, we've made some changes. And we still have a, a list of remaining schools and will continue to gather information. As I shared with the board, um, this Tuesday, I'm committed to listening and analyzing and giving them all the information they need to make an informed decision on December seventeenth. So I don't want to belabor, uh, some of the information that I've already shared. Uh, other than the purpose of rightsizing ASD is to elevate levels of academic service. And I think the other dot that I'd like to connect is, uh, thinking back to the budget presentation that we had earlier today. Things are not looking good for ASD moving forward. Even if there were a significant VSA increase of six hundred dollars, uh, ASD would still be in a position of a financial deficit. And what that means is that for years to come, we could be looking at, uh, lowering levels of service if we continue to operate the same number of schools that we've had for decades essentially. So there is some urgency to this, but I do understand this is an emotional and highly complicated topic. So we're here to listen, uh, and we will, uh, we'll see what happens on December seventeenth. But I'm committed to making sure we have enough information to make an informed decision.
Uh, assembly member Brawling.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think, um, most if not all of us have seen a lot of the advocacy happening around specific schools. Um, and I was reading an article this morning, um, kind of the, the schools that were taken off the list have gotten quiet. And then the schools that are still on the list, now, now we're seeing that bubble up, which is, you know, pretty predictable and understandable, as you said. I guess what happens if, uh, those advocates are successful and none, no changes are made? I think that's really, that's the thing that I struggle with because I hear what you're saying, that it, that it feels necessary. It is not a great choice, but it feels like a necessary choice in some way. And yet all of the public is going to defend their interest. And so what do we do with that? And I know, I know that's really ultimately on the school board and the district to make that decision. But I, I would just like to hear a very clear articulation of the case where no changes are made. And those, again, those advocates are successful in their, uh, protecting their interest.
Thank you, uh, member Bronga. I think the most succinct way that I could put it is
Brawley.
Sorry, member Brawley. I, my public Um, but the most succinct way that I can put it is that, uh, we're not grappling between status quo and making major changes. We're grappling between major changes and a continued, uh, continuation of diluting our services in our schools. So in some ways, uh, taking a school off of the list could be viewed as a positive thing. And that's because every single one of our buildings offers something incredible. Through this process, we've learned that there are dozens, if not hundreds of incredible teachers and par educators who are with our students right now in our underutilized schools. But with that said, my responsibility is to look 10 years ahead and things are not looking good. And I understand that we have some incredible advocates in Juneau and in this room, but I can't help but look back the past 10 years where we just haven't gotten to where we need to be on our legislative priorities. As I shared last month, uh, at the legislative luncheon, uh, our legislative priorities have not changed because, uh, there hasn't been a lot of movement towards them. So, uh, it's a very complicated calculus when we talk about those remaining on the list. Because while yes, it would be fantastic for those individual communities to continue on in those buildings. I, I'm very worried that taking no action means that those schools will get fewer and fewer resources. And the bottom line is that there's a baseline of resources that you need for a school to operate. You need your core teachers, you need a fantastic principal, ideally counselor and other support services. But every five years that passes by, a 1.0 nearest could turn into a point five. Uh, a third grade classroom could turn into a third and fourth grade combination classroom. And you see all of these complications that will become more acute as time goes on. And I think right now, everybody feels that their school is doing great right now, but there will be a breaking point if we take no action, which is why it's expressed at the school board constantly. There is a sense of urgency in taking change. So while we are collecting feedback and hearing from our constituents and others about all of the reasons why a school should remain open, I, I have to raise the alarm bells that if we take no action in 10 years, we're not doing students any favors. And this has always been about adding more fantastic educators and adults in our buildings so that we can advance our mission to six, uh, set up students for success in life.
Appreciate that.
Assemblymember Brona.
Thank you very much. Um, so last night Northeast Community Council passed a resolution of support for Nunaca and Baxter. And, uh, Scenic Foothills passed a similar resolution. But what was interesting is there was quite a cadre of, uh, Baxter teachers at the meeting, um, for Scenic Foothills. And they felt very wounded. And this is a messaging thing. Yes, you, you do have to close some schools. But they felt this wound in that, um, they're hearing the message that Bear Valley was able to organize, their parents were able to organize and advocate, and that's the way you do it. And they are dealing with a different community. Um, in Northeast Anchorage, there are many families who English is a second language. They're working a couple of jobs. They are not as able to organize and figure out how they're going to save their school. So that, that came up. And then aside from that, um, they're being told that they didn't organize like Bear Valley. But they didn't know that they were on the, the focus right now. Your original plan had them further out. And so that came up as well as, um, they have the, um, structured learning program. And a teacher from that program was there. And she said that if these students are moved, and, um, for those of you who don't know that they, they, um, are severely autistic, some of them and, and runners and, and they've had, this would be a third move that they've had recently because they were moved from Tarmigan Elementary. And her experience working with these students is that it takes six months once they have a move for them to feel comfortable enough that they actually start learning again. And, um, so, you know, she really pleaded that there's 50 students in that program that are going to be dramatically affected if they're pulled from there. So I, I wanted to pass that along. I did encourage them to go Saturday, um, and make their voices be heard, but it was pretty, um, pretty passionate.
And, and I'll respond a little bit to that. Um, yeah, I think the, the key thing out of Bear Valley was the building was being utilized in some ways we weren't aware of. It was a nonprofit that had rooms rented. Um, and, and the realization that if we close the school and move the students, those services really wouldn't follow. And it's really out on, Bear Valley is the edge of town. I mean, it's almost Switzerland compared to the rest of Anchorage. Um, they would have to travel quite a ways. But this is one of the, the frustrating things because I know that East Anchorage does feel targeted. Um, another way that someone from outside the area might look at it and say, wow, you guys have more schools than any other part of town. And they do. And they're fairly close together, which means when we're looking at consolidation, it, it makes a lot of sense. We're not talking about long drive times. We're not talking about steep hills. We're, we're looking at a number of blocks and, and whatnot. It is unfortunately that, that reality, that density of how the district got built, that causes it to be the natural place where we wind up finding places where we can do this. The other thing I want to say is I, I completely understand every person in the school taking it personally. Because these folks aren't going in and doing the best work they can do every day. And for somebody saying, oh, we're going to close you, feels like that's just totally being disregarded. Um, but the reality is it's from what, 57 locations. And, and that really is a part that gets lost because the, when folks are responding, they're responding about their school. But it's really about having 57 schools when we might define the 54, 53. Um, the numbers are down and, and staffing a school comes with a certain amount of overhead. Um, and I had not thought about what Dr. Bryant was mentioning, but you look at Fairbanks, they did away with school librarians a long time ago.
Mm-hmm.
That staffed the library, but it's not the same. A lot of school districts did not have a nurse, um, there all day long. And, and I, I have to say personally, I hate to think of Anchorage having to take that step. Nurses, tho- those individual spots do incredible work for a lot of kids that have severe need. But it, it is getting terribly expensive. And, you know, it's something we'll give down the road. So unfortunately, to the degree we can get people to step back and look at it, when it's a district with 57 schools. Um, you know, you think about trying to operate 57 McDonald's in Anchorage, that's really challenging. And, and if the business drops a little bit at all of them, you're still, you still have a demand. You still have a huge job to do. But consolidating into a few, uh, like some, a smaller number of buildings, don't have to have a manager, don't have to have as many folks, you don't have to have as many front counter people. That's the impact. But, but I also really understand the schools more than just a collection of classrooms and a building. And people are upset and hurt and it is, it, it does have a negative effect. No one, no one thinks we're doing this for the immediate good of everyone. Um, it's, it's a very frustrating position to be in, to be sure for everybody. Member Lawson.
Um, I appreciate the question and the conversation. I wanted to connect a few dots earlier, uh, in this meeting. Um, our CFO kind of explained a general formula, which is looking at our ADM, or maybe it's the AADM. And you can multiply a possible increase to the BSA. And you get a magic number. And that's basically a rough estimate of how much additional money ASD would receive. Uh, you know, should the legislature increase the BSA by 680 or a thousand or a hundred dollars? So I stretched out, um, I'll get to the, the end of this in a minute. When you play around with those numbers with potential inputs, you can see what the effect on our deficit would be, what the tipping point is to creating additional revenues. I think because of the efficiencies that have been, I use efficiencies in quotations, efficiencies, prior school consolidations, keeping, uh, salaries and benefits at really as low as possible for a number of years. Um, should the legislature swiftly take action to increase school funding to align it with inflation since FY 11, I am confident that it would generate enough revenue that ASD would be able to invest in more than 200, um, uh, additional teachers, which you could distribute to reinvest in our schools to address the people-to-teacher ratio increases which have taken place since FY 17. K through three have increased by a PTR of plus two. That's, this is our ratio. Grades four and five have increased by one. And the rest of the grades have all increased. But we're just talking about these elementary schools. The point is, should the legislature act swiftly in not a one-time manner, but in a statutory manner so that we have predictability moving forward, we would be able to at least advertise positions. Uh, I don't know whether those, those people are going to exist. But then you would need, you would be able to reduce the number of combo classes. You would be able to hire the specialists that are needed. You would, in short, be able to elevate the levels of academic service because you have additional bodies in our buildings. And you would also need, uh, additional classrooms in those buildings because you could move from a K1 combo to a kindergarten classroom and a first grade classroom.
Mm-hmm.
That is the effect of an adequate increase, not adequate, a, an inflation adjusted increase to the base student allocation is that we will be able to leverage those resources in direct service to our students to elevate the level of academic, um, services, which in turn should have positive impacts on their outcomes. But the reality, and maybe we'll talk about this in a little bit, is that we're going to be balancing a significant deficit. And so, um, I also see that consolidating those schools, in a way, it is a protective mechanism for the school, it could be a protective mechanism to increase the number of students at a receiving school, which will diminish the likelihood as we stare at our reality that those students are going to have additional combo classes that I think are otherwise going to plague the district, uh, if no action is taken or if insufficient action is taken. So we have multiple things happening at the same time.
So I have a bit of experience with schools and I know that combination classes are nothing new. That for 20 years, there were lots of combination classes and, and I, I don't, curriculum may have changed significantly with the, the, um, the different focus. But, um, those classes are wildly successful. Usually the older kids help mentor the younger. The more, um, you, you teach, the better you learn. And so that, those don't scare me. But one thing, uh, I wanted to add is like, if you're crunching numbers like this and, um, there is a school, um, that has pretty low enrollment, having, um, a big remodel. And I wonder what is going to happen with the available space in that school? What, what the plan is for that?
So during the second semester, we'll be coming back to the school board, depending on the decisions on the 17th of December, um, with some repurpose options. Uh, one of those, um, and we've talked publicly about it since last spring, would be to allow some childcare organizations and to be able to provide them space where they wouldn't have to pay exorbitant leases, which maybe would allow them, um, to present a business model to us, um, after we've released an RFP to demonstrate that due to release, uh, reduced overhead, the expectation would be reduced price for childcare. Um, you know, it's not something that anyone would believe overnight, we're going to have multiple, um, organizations jumping at it. Um, as early as this summer, we do have, um, a couple that have been, um, talking to me for, I don't know, six plus months. Um, and depending on decisions on the 17th, uh, you know, part of our problem, when you look at, take an administrative assistant at, at one of your elementary schools, um, after taxes, um, at $20 an hour, they make about $21,000 a school year after taxes. And that's if they didn't pay for medical. Childcare for two students or two kids, if they had two kids at $1,200 a month is $21,600 per nine months. So they would have effectively been in the hole $600 by working in order to have childcare. So we look at schools that we have had schools for the past four years, um, that we've been challenged hiring cafeteria managers. Um, same thing with all of our hourly employees, AAs, parapros, um, all of them. And a, and a big problem is if you go to childcaredesert.org, Anchorage is a childcare desert. I mean, with very few exceptions. Eagle River is, um, the vast majority of Anchorage. Affordable childcare just isn't available for the people who otherwise would love to work. And so if we can get that, um, for our staff embedded into schools, um, you know, really looking at those schools that are hard to fill, maybe title schools and, and schools like that, then, then maybe it will, it will give them an option of now I can afford to work. And not only can I afford to work, but I'm going to end up at the end of the year with, with, working is going to be worth working. Um, so that will be one option. We're also looking at moving other district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, really to look at repurposing, we have to know what our, what our baseline is on the number of facilities. But we certainly have looked at multiple facilities and we'll be talking to the board about that starting in January.
Member Bellamy on one, have a comment?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for my, um, random, uh, sounds. Anyway, uh, I did want to get back to the resolutions that were passed by, uh, Northeast, uh, Community Council and Scenic Foothills Community Council. Um, uh, Assembly, uh, person, um, Bronga is absolutely correct. Uh, the staff, uh, who we also had a little bit, I also had a little bit of time to, uh, touch base with before the meeting. Um, I mean, it's hard. I mean, every single, ev- this is not, this is not an intent, intent to harm or to diminish or to, uh, but it's real. People have really real emotions. And I, and I, having had my grandson at both Baxter and Nunaca, uh, those schools are very, very important to me. Uh, but I do want to encourage, uh, everyone, e- especially the board members to read the, the, to read the, um, resolutions that came out of both, uh, councils. Um, because, you know, initially it is, it's like, no, keep us whole. Do not let us do, let us continue to provide the level of service and serve the kids that we currently serve. Uh, but there was also discussion, if that is not possible, then here are some other options, things that they would like to see. And I think in order for us to have a holistic conversation about, about this, recognizing the emotional, um, uh, um, you know, pain and that, that this has, you know, e- erupted in our community. Cause it's not just East Anchorage, it's not just Bear Valley, it's not just Lake Hood. Uh, people who, people throughout this city have ties to these schools. These are like, you know, schools are like legacies. They're like family legacies. You just don't interrupt. And when something happens that it, that, that, that might happen, it is a cause for concern. So please read the resolutions. And I do want to thank, uh, those community councils for really making time, scheduling those special meetings to make sure that their voices were heard. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that in our last work session, uh, since we're talking about rightsizing, uh, Member Jacobs, who could not be here today, did issue a, an amendment. And I don't know if that is handy for people to see. I think I would like to ask, uh, America if she could maybe make copies so people could have it when they leave. Not now, because unless they have it already, if they don't have it already, um, you know, we can, uh, get copies to you. Uh, but in that, uh, in, in that amend- amendment, should it, uh, the board, should it pass, um, we will be talking about it, uh, on, on the 17th. I think we'll be talking about it in our governance meeting on the 12th and we'll be talking about it again. But there are, uh, a couple of bullets. It's only a couple of bullets long. Uh, but he, he, in that amendment, he makes some, I think, significant, uh, considerations for the board. Oh, thank you, America. Uh, one is to expand, uh, Tudor Elementary School Montessori Program to grades K6 for the 24, 25, 26 school year and beyond. Uh, that puts a Montessori school in the- That puts a Montessori school in the big, bigger picture, the ten-thousand-foot view. It puts a Montessori school on this side of town. He also makes a, 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 he, a recommendation or an amendment, he makes an amendment to reprioritize our CIP so that we can put some capital investment in Wonder Park Elementary School and build that school up, do what we need to do to try to create that, re-imagine that particular, that school and its programming and everything. Relinquishing the management and control of that, of the parcel on, that's located on Muldoon Road. Back to the assembly, I mean, that's something that to me makes sense, but the board has not discussed any of this yet. I'm just making you aware of what the proposed amendment would be. And then collaborating with charter schools. If we are, you know, if charter schools do occupy our, our buildings, if that decision is made, and if that happens, then he makes some, he, he makes a request for some special agreements with the charter schools. And some of those, and that, a major agreement is around transportation. So I, 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 I think as painful and as emotional as this is for all of us, especially our students and our families, and, and I can't leave out the staff because they've given their all to their programming and to their students. There are, there are some, I think, legitimate and worthy options to have, to, to also for the board to know about and to discuss as we try to make the best decision possible for all of our students. So I'll leave it there and, and unless any, if we have questions, I can collect them and send them to member Jacobs, or I can try to respond to them now. Thank you.
Member Higgin.
Thank you. I'm not going to respond right now to that particular item, but there was some questions or issues that I'll, the board will be discussing on that on the seventeenth. I just want to make reference to the right sizing because a couple of years ago, last summer, I guess, a year ago, we got into the point of where we're going to cut funds. And we put everything out on the board of different areas in the schools. We're going to, all of that is going to be subject to review and assessment of what we cut. Right sizing is just one of the options. So within that, but all of the cards, whether you cut middle school, whether you do this, whether you do that, all of those issues are going to be on the table because the amount of funds is so great. What I appreciated about the meeting last night, and I attended that as well, and I appreciate that in the resolution, is that they focus on educational outcomes. And I think that's where we need to get focused on. All the different options we have are funding. But regardless, it's going to be an academic outcomes. Their involvement with our parents, when the schools are closed and they're moved away, is going to be adversely impacted. The, the special programs that they have at Baxter, moving that at this point is going to be impacted. We looked at, look at Lake Hood. The idea of moving those programs to Turnagain has a tremendous impact. When I went there and said, how is this going to work out? Are we going to split hundreds of thousands of dollars into changes even to accommodate that from the construction standpoint? Plus, the impact it's going to have on their programs after that. I, we've got to look down the road, absolutely. But we've got to look down the road on academic outcomes as well. And I'm concerned, and what I heard last night is that you're dealing with schools that whether the parent's involvement is impacted from an economic standpoint. You've got single families out there trying to be involved and you're distancing them. You're, you're doing it. The question is, what other options are there before you move programs from Nunaka to, to, to someplace other than Baxter, for example? That was one of the issues. How can we arrange this differently so that we maintain the school plus? The issue about, I agree with the comment about combined classes. You know, pros and cons of that. Obviously, I'm familiar with the, with classes deliberately designed that way. One, two, one, two, three in the same class. I know the impact of that. And sometimes we've worked with that, we've made it work. And some schools are built on that, you know, within that. So there's a lot of issues there. I just, somewhere along this line, you've got to start with the problem statement. Then you've got to analyze all the options before you argue about the solution, the selection. And, and I think we've moved quickly from this is the problem to here is the solution, where we had the discussion of all the options that are out there. Because if it's just saving this money, where else are we going to be cutting anyway? And which priority do we want? I, I think the discussion that we've, that the legislature has put us in is that we keep talking about dollars and we're not talking about kids. We're not talking about academic outcomes anymore. We're not talking about the pros and cons, because there are pros and cons to any solution we did. But my concern is that we weren't able to focus on the solution. And when we talk about rightsizing the school, the impact of that, like going to Turnagain, is only coming up in the last couple of weeks, but we're going to have to deal with that issue. And that hasn't been resolved. So to me, this is a serious issue. I appreciate the discussion last night in regards to it saying, where is the outcome? How are you going to move these kids? What are they going to do? How are their academics going to be impacted? How are the families going to be impacted? The, the bottom line is, safety for kids first and academics second. And then we, we take all orders from the, you know, the public, we represent the public. But we, we're not focused enough on the kids, on academic outcomes. We're focused on, this is a solution that may help us with staffing, ease of administration. I don't care. I care about outcomes for kids. And if we can somehow get the discussion back on that, but the legislation has done a good job of making us focus not on that, but what options can we cut? How can we, but we've got to keep putting kids in it first. And I think last night, the discussion, putting kids first, was a really good discussion. Those resolutions were really good. It's going to impact the involvement of parents with these schools, and that's going to impact academic outcomes. You should go in there and look at it, the size of schools, the involvement of parents is a big factor on educational outcomes. So this is a big concern. I appreciate the administration trying to come out with alternatives, recognizing pros and cons to all this. But two years ago, it was focused mostly on money and trying to make the legislature happy with cuts. Now we'll focus on combined classes. The, the issue is not ease of administration, it's academic outcomes. And this is a tough, tough decision that we'll face.
Assembly member Vaughn speaking.
Sure, thank you. So I, in my role, I, I haven't wanted to weigh in too much on the rightsizing because I feel like that is something the school board needs to lead in terms of conversation. And I realize I have very limited insight into the criteria that you all looked at, you know, working with the, the district administration and in terms of, you know, what the candidates would be. However, you know, I would just, I guess from my perspective, I have worked a lot in my role on the assembly at housing affordability and, you know, taking a city planning lens to these locations. Schools like Baxter, like Nunaka, I mean, they are surrounded by mixed-density housing in a way that Bear Valley is not. And when we have had these conversations around zoning reform, housing affordability, the area of talent that we often hear the loudest from in terms of being opposed to future growth and density in housing that could be beneficial to the tax base, really is South Anchorage, that Rabbit Creek area. And so I guess a question that I ask is, you know, when you look at housing affordability, where can people afford to live? Where can families afford to live? And I think particularly the cost that you, that you showed us in your budget presentation of transportation, right? You have schools that are candidates for closure here that are very walkable neighborhoods. You know, I certainly appreciate the removal of Wonder Park from the list. Wonder Park is a, is a school that kids can walk to. And I also appreciate member Branga's line of questioning about, you know, what if kids can walk to school and they can show up? You know, I think about where can teachers afford to live, right? When we were doing the, the Home Initiative Roadshow, we had a slide on fictional Mr. Lewis where we, we looked at, we created a character and we, we actually looked at what is the average income for a new teacher to ASD? And where can they afford to live? And if Mr. Lewis wanted to walk to, I think it was Lake Otis Elementary, could he find housing in that area? And the answer is no, he would be rent overburdened. And so I, there, there's just so many things I think about. You know, that old concept of, of a neighborhood school. I think that the, the school that maybe member Branga is referencing that's undergoing a rebuild right now, it's a neighborhood school. It's immersed in the neighborhood, the kids can walk there. And then when we build these schools that are sort of more of like a, they look like a campus in the middle of the woods where you have to drive to, right? How does that impact families? And then I, I think there's also, there should be an expectation that if you want to live on the edge of town, you're going to have to drive more. And, and you know, it may be that you want the two-acre lot, but that's going to come with more of your own travel demand. That's the trade-off that you're entering into. So I don't know, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I would just opine again with imperfect insight into the, the rubric that you looked at, that I think those schools that are surrounded by multifamily housing that people are more likely to be able to afford and that are more walkable, I, I think that those are things that need to, to be carefully considered. Thank you.
Assembly student representative speaking.
Thank you. I wanted some clarification on what we mean by combination classrooms, especially for schools that previously didn't have them. Would there be any impact on curriculum or the pupil-to-teacher ratio? Or is it just for the purpose of consolidating classroom use?
That's a great question. I can try to take a step at it. So really, a combination classroom, there are kind of two separate types. One would be what we know in a Montessori school, where the whole program is designed around students mentoring other students in a multi-grade format. Montessori is fantastic type of educational program. But in some schools, after you lose enrollment and based off of the district's ways that it staffs schools, if you don't have enough funds to staff as many teachers as you could the year before, one of the mechanisms that districts across the country are faced with is, well, instead of having a really large third-grade classroom, let's say thirty kids, let's have a twenty-student classroom with third grade, and then we can make a combination between fourth and fifth. So it happens as a result of stagnant funding, for example, but it could also happen because of bubbles in your enrollment. And the district has some mechanisms to address this. One of which would be essentially subsidizing the, the cost of, of an extra teacher. And we do that in very rare situations where, you know, essentially the school's not provided enough teachers based off of the staffing model. And essentially, we're trying to keep the school whole. But the issue is, is that every year that there are budget reductions, one of the things that we even have to look at is our ability to be able to do that. So essentially, we hold back a few teaching positions and distribute them very sparingly to help keep class sizes stable. This past year, those are one of the items that the district had to consider cutting back because we wanted to actually preserve the teaching positions that were filled by people rather than holding back a bunch of unassigned teaching positions. So it might be a little too complicated for what you're asking, but essentially, there are different ways to go about combination classrooms. I've certainly met fantastic teachers that are experts at teaching multiple grade levels in one building. But with that said, more and more of Anchorage School District teachers are in their first or second year. And one of the long-term issues that I see is pension reform, I think, is required because really, our young people don't have very many incentives to stay teaching in Alaska because most other states offer the opportunity to get a pension after they retire. So you're going to see more and more first, second-year and third-year teachers in our classrooms, and those are the ones that are going to struggle the most with balancing not one, but two different curriculums in, in a single classroom. So that's one of the reasons why we're talking about this as being an issue. But I, I do concede that there are some pros to it. But you need to design the, the pedagogical structure around combination classrooms, in my opinion. Though some teachers are so excellent, they can do well regardless, but not every teacher is in that category, especially as we have more and more new teachers every year. Great question.
And I would add in, when you look at programs like Bowman Open Optional, Polaris, and some other schools, they've designed combination classes in, but they often are two grade levels with two teachers. And they, they can combine the class as a whole, or the teachers can specialize. The combos we're trying to avoid is, say, one teacher with about twenty-five students that are split between two grade levels. Because they do have distinct curriculum that they're, you're supposed to be teaching two different lessons at the same time. And, and some of our lessons at the elementary level are fairly prescribed in that the, the teacher is occupied delivering the lesson. But if you're supposed to be doing that to two different groups, it's really tough. So those, those we don't think do as well. The ones where it's been designed, as Dr. Bryant said, where it actually is a feature of the program, those combination classes are great, and no one wants to eliminate those. We just don't want to be forced into a less desirable model, member lessons.
And I wanted to say that thanks to another board member's request for information recently, the board recently received a response from the administration looking at student growth last year in combo classes versus sort of straight-grade-level classes. And it turns out that when you teach just a, a straight third grade or straight fourth grade, the students are making more growth in their math or in their English language arts than in those unintentional combination classrooms. Does that make sense? And I, I don't know if that's something that could be forwarded to the assembly, but that might be of interest. It was in a recent board connect.
There's no other comments, someone said we'll move ahead. And we are in about our last fifteen minutes as far as scheduling. To make everyone aware, ASD, Assembly Joint Resolution Concerning State Funding for Schools. And member lessons.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of walk us through it. There are a sort of a series of documents stapled together. Just to refresh everyone's memory, at our most recent joint meeting in September, we had just received the glimpse of the FY twenty-six budget deficit and the gravity of the situation, from my recollection, is what spurred joint interest or mutual interest in creating a new joint resolution for the upcoming legislative session. So what you see before you is memorandum zero-seven-nine with a recommendation, which is that the board and the assembly each in our own bodies consider passing the attached joint resolution. And then the pertinent facts really review that we went through this process together a year ago that our fiscal situation has not improved, that our students' academic outcomes have not improved, and that we have received new information. And those critical pieces of information are highlighted on page three of, of the memo itself. And they are analysis from the end of September from the State of Alaska's Legislative Finance Division, which kind of got us to this FY eleven moment in time. And this legislative analysis calculates that if you were to match the buying power of the FY eleven BSA for this current year, the base student allocation would need to increase by one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. And then the second piece of information was produced by our CFO, and that simply projects that eighteen oh eight figure for expected inflation in order to bridge the gap between FY eleven and FY twenty-six. And that's how we came up with the figure of one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three. So that is all context for the substance of the joint memo itself, which begins with the identical language from last year's joint resolution. It really draws heavily on language from the Legislative Finance memo in talking about how we get funding in the state of Alaska, reviewing changes to the BSA. I think it's relevant that over a three-year period between FY nine, ten, and eleven, as a result of a joint legislative task force, the legislature increased the BSA by a hundred dollars for each of those three years to account for inflation. And that was the last meaningful adjustment for inflation. Since that time, since the start of the FY eleven school year, the State of Alaska has increased the BSA by less than that three hundred dollars, by two hundred and eighty dollars over, over the ensuing years, which is ultimately why we're at where we're at. So as you go through the next, uh, few pages, the joint resolution, um, looks at the BSA. It looks at the district cost factor. It really reviews people transportation. It reviews school bond debt reimbursement. It highlights the cost shift to Anchorage taxpayers, which we've just reviewed a little bit today. Um, it notes, as it did last year, that the Anchorage School Board and Administration have responded to these challenges by decreasing administrative overhead, minimizing growth and labor costs, pursuing consolidation, promoting efficiencies, identifying new revenue opportunities. Um, it addresses, it notes that, uh, that the board over the years has sought to align available resources with instruction. We didn't talk about it during the bond, uh, conversation, but the fact that our, our snow removal fleet is in such sorry state of affairs is a direct, uh, manifestation of aligning resources with instruction and not with snow removal. Um, it review, the joint resolution, uh, reviews briefly how federal funds, how the majority of our federal relief funds were used, and that was to backfill our, um, our, our growing deficit. So more than a hundred and two million of our federal relief funds simply went to maintain our pupil to teacher ratios. And in that budget packet, there are a number of years where you can see four hundred and something teachers remained on our payroll because we used federal relief funds to keep them in their jobs. Um, and then it reviews, uh, the structural deficit really growing from FY twenty-four, twenty-five and where we're at in FY twenty-six. And it, I just wanted to flag that, um, the structural deficit, which really encompasses the general fund and transportation fund deficits is overall a hundred and eleven million dollars. Um, and then it finally, uh, concludes by saying, uh, that the board can uh, use fund balance conservatively or aggressively, either at a, an eight percent best practice level or down to a five percent level, which would leverage, uh, some additional dollars. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, without changes, um, and going from the, the third paragraph from the, the end, um, we may be able to, we may be required to eliminate five hundred and fifty-eight positions unless legislative action is taken in advance of our obligation to pass a balanced budget by the February eighteenth, um, meeting. And that figure, five hundred and five, fifty-eight comes directly from our pro forma. Um, so that is the total number of positions, uh, which is calculated from the, the overall structural deficit. Um, and so there are essentially two sections to the resolution. One, which says, uh, adjusts the, the figure from last year to raise the BSA by no less than nineteen sixty-three so as to account for inflation that has occurred since July first, twenty-ten, and has been projected to increase through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And two, to increase transportation funding by at least three hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil. And that is, uh, reflective of the nine million dollars and change that the municipality, uh, currently, um, supports our transportation system. So that'd be great to be able to cost shift, um, have the state resume, um, ownership of those transportation costs so that we could leverage local dollars towards operations and learning, not just transporting students. Um, and then the, the last set of resolution items, uh, include, as they did last year, passing additional legislation that would adjust the BSA to account for inflation on an annual basis, directing and appropriating necessary funds to pay for a state-funded Iser study of the district cost factor, uh, which that hasn't happened in a couple of decades. And passing additional legislation that would update the DCF on a triennial basis and returning to historic models of cost sharing. So, uh, this was a non-action item. We didn't discuss it at our last meeting. It will be up, subject to, uh, action at the December seventeenth meeting. Um, so I would, um, welcome any comments. And then, uh, attached, you'll see the Legislative Finance Division analysis, although I only see one page of it, um, and, uh, the ASD calculations bringing that eighteen oh eight figure up to nineteen sixty-three.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair. Just a, just a quick comment. Uh, thanks, uh, Member Lessons did a great job of, uh, walking through, briefly walking through the resolution. And I just want to thank, uh, the assembly members, um, and their staff for being patient with us as we juggled lots of, uh, different, uh, uh, inputs to come out to, to end up with this, uh, particular, uh, resolution. And as always, we appreciate the assembly's support. Sorry, Mr. Salty, if I stepped on your, on your words.
Any other questions or comments? And of course, we would greatly appreciate the assembly taking this up in due time when you do have a call. Uh, Assemblyperson Bronga.
So your plan is to bring this forward on December seventeenth? Um, and we would be hoping to put it on, uh, in January, if that timeline works for you.
I think that would be timely.
I believe your clerk has it, um, already drafted as, uh, for your deliberation on January seventh.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move to the joint retreat, which was brought by the assembly. Member Bronga.
Yeah, all I can offer is that's been on the agenda since I joined this body, so I don't know what the intent is. And, um, I don't know whose, whose ball or whose court the ball is in as far as doing that. So I think the question is really, is that a priority for us in twenty twenty-five? Because we should start planning that now if we're going to. And, and I don't know the answer to that.
And, and we don't, um, but it is, I would assume something our, our board would be interested in. Um, yeah, we have no idea the timing or, or how urgent. Whatnot, um, we can put that off for another meeting. Do we know who, which member of the assembly asked for that? Oh, okay. Okay, um, that brings us to member comments. Again, I'm just going to note the time, it is eleven fifty-seven. Um, but does someone have comments they'd like to make on the meeting as a whole? Member Donald.
First of all, I appreciate the presence of the municipal administration here. Thank you for being here. Um, I wanted to express I remain concerned with the lack of full historical, uh, staffing for our, uh, student resource officers in our schools. Um, um, we have schools, times have been increased where there's no officers present. And, um, they're just essential, I think, to provide an immediate response to any armed threat. And even with full traditional, uh, staffing levels, even our, most of, only one of our middle schools is, it has an SRO in it. So, um, the, the board has passed a resolution, uh, several years ago, uh, asking the assembly continue to do their best to try to get the program expanded into our middle schools also for security. Um, just wanted to also mention that this week, the U.S. House of Representatives Special Committee on Pandemic its report, which was quite long, but highly critical of the degree to which schools in the United States were closed down during COVID. Uh, did an analysis of the European countries, which at the time I pointed out, were not shutting down their elementary schools um, for COVID, and they proved to be right and we were wrong in doing so. Um, and with some very serious impacts upon our students and they're continuing to this day. So we need to learn from that history and do better in keeping our schools open in future circumstances.
Any additional comments? Member Higgins?
Well, I'll echo my appreciation for these meetings, um, as well. Uh, and you, it's a chance to vent our frustrations, our issues and our concerns. But, uh, what I look forward to is actually, um, uh, a joint workshop with the assembly because there are opportunities here that we don't pursue. Um, it's been a history here, and I've been, uh, moved up to Alaska and Anchorage to eighty-three, of where can the, uh, municipality and the school district work more jointly together on operations and save, uh, money for the public and improve our efficiencies? Um, I've made reference to this in the past. A good example is just group health insurance. We have an unlimited basically liability risk. We're self-insuring. And it's an issue for two years we're working on, but not getting anywhere. So a billion dollars in life insurance, I mean, uh, medical insurance that we are exposed to, you name it. But combining, we may be able to save money operationally in some areas, and we should at least pursue that. Some of this won't work out. Uh, when you start putting together, uh, areas that are done by union contracts, you find that we have to pay more because you're paying more than us and we have to concede to you. It would be kind of interesting. But there are opportunities here if we put together a good agenda, I think, to really look at that because the public's always asked for it. We've had conflicts in the past where the assembly was trying to grab stuff from the, from the ASD. ASD gets a report says, wait, we, we'd benefit if we did more of it. They said, oh, we'll drop it. I remember those days. But I think right now we've got a, 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 a group that's a perfect group to get together to talk about this without being territorial. And, and I think that's a big benefit that we have, that we haven't had in the past as much. Uh, so I would look forward to, um, having a workshop that talks about those opportunities where we can do more together and, um, it benefit the public and benefit both operations. Because when the resources are more, we're going to help kids as well. So that's, I, I look forward to some opportunity. But having an agenda out there with that type of approach, putting that whole list together, uh, could be real beneficial to both quarters, I think.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, um, move to, uh, this part of our agenda is actually laid out the way we have it for our evening meetings. We let students testify first so they can be home in time to get a good night's sleep. Um, hopefully they're all in school right now. But I take it there's no student comments from the audience, anyone from the public that wishes to make a comment? Seeing none, uh, I'm not sure if there are written public comments, but respective administrative assistants, the executive assistants will make those available. Um, that brings us to the schedule of our upcoming meetings, March seventh and June sixth. And that brings us to the final item, which will be adjournment. Without a call, am I really allowed to adjourn? Heading. Thank you all. We are in adjournment.